All right, it's six thirty-four. Can I get started here? I'm sure Chris will find his way back. Call this meeting the order of the Champagne County Board Committee of the Whole. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Hahnauer Friedman.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Ingram.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Laxson.
Here.
Michaels.
Present.
Pugh.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rogers.
Present.
Sexton. Store. Straub.
Here.
Taylor. Thorsland. Varentha- Tharnot. Vanage Tharnot. Sorry. Wilson. Carter.
Here.
Covert. Esri.
Here.
Fortato.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Patterson.
Here. Could I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved, Carter.
Carter and Taylor. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes from April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the regular meeting?
So moved Ingram.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I do not have any public participation slips. Think everybody here is on salary in the audience, so. Next, we have communications.
I would just like to say that I was a proud participant at the Highway Committee meeting on last Friday, where we honored Mrs. Covert. She's been on the county board, Ms. Lorraine Covert has been on the county board and serviced to the county for nearly forty years. Twenty-three of those years have been with the Highway and Transportation Committee. And I just wanted to say that this lady just exemplifies strength in our community. She's just been a long-serving, public servant that we are very, very proud of and thankful for. So I just really want to give her that acknowledgement and tell her thank you.
If I can add to that, those of you that weren't here last Friday at the highway, we had a wonderful group of family and friends for Lorraine. And please, please stop by there. It's a beautiful sign and the plaque is indicative of Ms. Covert and her dedication to the county. So please stop by the Highway Department. It's a beautiful building, it's easy to get to, and check it out. Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine.
All right, anybody else? All right, next on the agenda.
Excuse me. Just let, remind everybody that May twentieth is the Residential Electronics Collection. So if you haven't notified your, your people in your districts, let them know.
All right, anybody else for communications? All right, next on the agenda is Policy Personnel Appointments.
Thank you, Kyle. Like to handle these three appointments and reappointments as a joint. Without objection. Resolute, resolution. Appointing John Bergy to the Board of Review, term June first, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-three? Okay. Twenty twenty-five. Resolution. Boy, I'll tell you, I sure ought to read these more carefully. Resolution appointing Lidl Merrick to the Urbana Champagne sanitary district term, June first, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Resolution appointing Lisa Hitt Liggins Chambers to the Mental Health Board, unexpired term ending twelve, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion? Thank you. Discussion to the motion. Honorable Mike Ingram.
Do we need to, to friendly amend it just to say five thirty-one? Just so there's no ambiguous five thirty-three, twenty twenty-five on there?
I, I, I think that's a typo and yes, we can do that. Do we need a second on that?
I think the first and second just have to accept, if I recall.
Oh, do you accept that, Jamal? And who's the second?
Lorraine.
Lorraine? Okay, thank you, that correction is, is accepted. Any other discussion to the, to the, to the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Passes unanimously. The applications for open appointments is going to be in a new format, which is not included in pages seven and ten on, in, in your packet as indicated, but it'll probably be here next time. The, and we'd like to send several jobs to the Evaluation Committee. Numbers two and three. And number four. Can we do that as a, as a joint? No? Okay.
Four's the.
That's fine, that's fine.
It's already been through.
How about two and three? No objection to two and three? As an omnibus motion? Okay. Request for job content evaluation committee to review clerk's tax map technician assistant deputy slash appraiser and assistant deputy slash sales analyst position for the supervisor of assessments. Request for job content evaluation committee to review the GIS technician position for Champagne County GIS Consortium. Do we have a, a motion? Thank you. Second?
Second, Straub.
Ms. Straub, second. Thank you. Discussion on the motion? I'll simply say I think that both of these are good ideas and, and I hope that, without any further comment, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, so that, that's unanimous. Number A four, recommendation for the county board approval of the updated job description for the Information and Technology Specialist in the County Clerk's Office, effective May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Jen Lachson.
So moved, Lachson.
Lachson, eh, 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 second. Patterson, thank you, thank you, Kyle. Discussion to the motion. Ms., Ms., Dr. Fortato.
I believe I know the answer to this question, but I have a question for Ms. Patton. Yes. My understanding is this did not change job classifications and so therefore will not have a budget impact. Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct. It did not move up, um, a pay grade, it remained the same. It went up a couple of points in the evaluation from the questionnaire that we had to fill out.
Thank you, I was sleeping. Mr. Goss?
Yeah, I'd like to know why this is still in the clerk's office and not supervised by IT. That was a big complaint for the last clerk and was assured that this would stop. But that's my only complaint on this, is this still should be in IT.
I agree with that. I think the ultimate goal is to have all of IT, but the reality is in our office, technology is not decreasing, it's increasing. There's a huge, complicated technical component, particularly centered around the administration of elections and with even tax extension. And not to dismiss or discount IT, but they simply do not have the bandwidth. They've had a lot of issues retaining personnel, there's been a lot of turnover, and it's not clear to us at this point that they'd be able to support the clerk's office with everything going on appropriately. But it's something that we're continually having discussions with MC. Ultimately, that would be the goal, we're just not at that, we haven't hit that threshold yet.
Ms. Fortato.
I, I could be wrong, that might have been verbatim what the previous, not this current clerk, but what the previous clerk told me, is that, I, I know this has been, so now, you know, under two different elected officials, this has been a discussion that the board has had. I do agree with centralizing, but I do also appreciate that I've had two different clerk's offices tell me that it's so vital to their office, that the, ensuring that that position is staffed, dedicated, so I, I, I do understand what you're saying. I, I am going to support this though, as it is. I do think we as a county should continue to think about how do we do that consolidation, but not in a way that jeopardizes the function.
Ms. Patton, would this IT person at least informally coordinate and communicate with the IT folks?
Absolutely. Right now, our previous IT specialist moved into our Director of Operations and they coordinate, he's continued as the Technology Specialist and as the Director of Operations to coordinate with MC and partner in any way that we possibly can, whether it's loaning laptops for expungement summit or just supporting in general. There, there's a great deal of collaboration that happens and we want to continue that. And again, ultimately, the goal would be for consolidation, but we're just not at that point right now.
Thank you. It's, I, it's been my experience that county personnel doing, work well with the, with their other departments and, and even with municipalities. And I'm very happy, that was one of the first things I learned. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to recommendation to the Finance Committee for approval of the creation of the HR Generalist Position to be assigned to Grade Range H, effective May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Your motion.
Second, Carter.
Ms. Taylor, thank you. Second. Carter, thank you, Ms. Carter. Discussion on the, on the motion. My goodness. We had a lot of discussion in our caucus. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution honoring Stanley Summers. Mr. Summers fa, uh, son is here, the Honorable County Executive Steve Summers. With, with permission, I'll go ahead and read the motion. I know it says, it says page forty, but is it on page forty? Oh, well, not on, oh, yes it is, yes it is. Okay. Whereas Stanley Summers passed away peacefully at his home on Sunday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas Mr. Summers serves as a county board member for District Eight from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-eight. Whereas Mr. Summers served in the Navy and was a proud member of Labor's Local Seven O Three. Whereas Mr. Summers was a longtime resident of Urbana. He and his wife Jill raised their three children here. Whereas Mr. Summers was committed to his community, coaching numerous youth sports and was inducted into the Urbana High School Coaches Hall of Fame in two thousand and two. Whereas Mr. Summers will be remembered by his loving family of three children, ten grandchildren and two grandchildren-in-law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Champagne County Board recognizes the commitment and dedication of Stanley Summers to his family and community. Be it further resolved that the county board members posthumously thank Mr. Summers for his service to Champagne County, presented, adopted and approved and recorded on this day, eighteenth of May, Anno Domini, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Mr. Covert?
Second.
Thank you, Chair Covert. Patterson. I'll just add my recognition that it's, it's not mentioned, but it turns out that, like myself, Mr. Summers was a Fulbright scholar. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The monthly fees report is in the packet. I don't have any other business or a chair's report. Designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda are Roman numeral seven, A one, B through C. Item number two and three. And item number five. Chair Patterson, that concludes Policy Personnel and Appointments.
Chair Store. Before you end, could I have a moment?
Oh, of course.
I just want to thank the board for their support for myself and my family through this time. It's regretful that my dad is not able to be here to read this, I know he would really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
All right, next is Finance.
First up, I have a budget amendment, BUA twenty twenty-three oh four seven seven, Fund Two Zero Eight Three, County Highway Department, Zero Six Zero Highway, increased appropriations, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, increased revenue zero. Reason, the Highway Department's fiscal year two, twenty twenty-two budget included appropriations for the purchase of a Mack dump truck. The truck was ordered in April of twenty twenty-two and was not delivered until twenty twenty-three. The unspent funds need to be added to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Do I have a motion? Diane?
Second, Carter.
Second, Carter. That's a hot one. Discussion. I know, I was, I was trying to get to you, Lorraine, but Samantha jumped and dived in front of you. Are you, are you okay with that? All right. So we're going to change the motion to Ms. Covert and Carter. Thank you. I don't know if I've ever had that happen. Second, eh, any, any discussion? Seeing none, um, we're, you know, glad to get the truck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fiscal year budget transfer, BUA twenty twenty-three oh four four one five, Fund One Zero Eight Zero, General Corporate Department, Zero Six Zero Juvenile Detention Center, amount a hundred thousand dollars, reason to transfer savings from the regular full-time employees line to the outside boarding line. Transfer required to send juveniles to outside facilities to maintain safety and security while we continue to hire and train new staff. Do I have a motion? Ms. Taylor, second, Mr. Sexton, discussion. Jamal?
Thank you. Hi, Shannon, I have some questions, can you come? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Shannon, for being here. I just had a few questions. So, I know that your report says that you guys aren't fully staffed and that you are down seven staff, you have seven vacancies. Is that all for officers or can you elaborate on the vacancies for me?
Yes, we have seven. Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, we have seven detention officer vacancies at the Juvenile Detention Center as of today. Yesterday, we had eight, but we had somebody start yesterday, so now we are back to seven vacancies. And that is the least amount of vacancies we've had the entire year thus far.
How many officers do you typically have? Or what's a full staff, I guess?
A full staff is twenty-four.
So two officers per juvenile con, is that?
No, it. We have about, we have thirteen kids in custody right now. And then we have two in McLean County currently. We did have three. We mo, we had three, one of them ended up being transferred over to the county jail because he turned eighteen, so we are now at two in McLean County. And there are, so there are about three or four officers per shift right now.
How long do you anticipate having to have juveniles out of county?
Well, ideally, we could get the, so we just hired someone yesterday and we also had two new people start in the past three weeks. So we have three people who've started over the past three weeks. So it takes time to get those people trained and fully functional. And it's still, I mean, being a detention officer, it's a job that takes a long time to learn. But we would like to get them trained and counting as staff in the next two to three months. But we're also going to have some more vacancies when our current superintendent retires at the end of June. So that's going to potentially create more vacancies as people promote. And then there'll be potentially another opening.
What steps have you taken for recruitment?
We are going to career fairs, we just went to the Western Career Fair, we've gone to SIUE. We're using Handshake. We're on the U of I Social Work Job Board, the Hire Redbird, Redbird Job Board. We revamped the job posting fairly recently. We increased the salary starting in January. I've been sending the posting out, when I got into this position in January, I started sending out the posting to local providers, you know, Tracy Days, Tracy Parsons, Karen Sims, Sam Smith, I've been trying to get the posting out to other people. So those are some of the things that we have been doing.
And I know our county as a whole has issues with staffing. Do you have any reasons that you think in particular you're having issues hiring people? Is it the job, the description, the salary?
I don't, I don't think it's a money thing at this point, I think it's a, it's a hard job. I, I mean, it's, it's a job where you're in a twenty-four-seven facility, where, you know, you're in there with those kids and lots of things happen. I mean, you know, you don't ever know what's going to happen when you come into your shift that day. You never know if someone's going to be upset about court or about what happened. There's, it's, it's a hard position, as Ed can attest to, because Ed worked at the Juvenile Detention Center for many years. We worked together for many years. I mean, it's not an easy job. And I think, you know, with COVID and working from home, this isn't a work-from-home job. This isn't a Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty job either. And, you know, nights, weekends, holidays, people at this point are not really wanting to do that kind of work.
Thank you, those are all the questions I have.
Not a question, but a comment, yeah, it's, it's a twenty-four-seven job. They clo, they close a lot of things around here in inclement weather. That place never closes. And in twenty-two years, I, I lived a mile and a half from there. I spent more than my share of off-time in there. It's, it's a hard job, it's hard to find people who are dedicated enough to do it.
I'm actually trying to recruit Ed to come back and help us with a few things.
And I'm going to.
Thank you. Mr. Store.
On the back end of what Ed said, this week happens to be Correctional Officers Recognition Week. And I hope you'll convey our regards to the good people that are doing this work.
I will, thank you.
Any other, in ques, any other comments or questions? Ms. Richards?
I just didn't want to take up all the time. I'm just going to vote no for this, I don't support housing juveniles out of county, and for that reason, I'm voting no. Wanted the record to be clear.
Appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next up, Liz, if you want to come up. Budget transfer, BUA twenty twenty-three oh four five three nine, Fund One Zero Eight Zero, General Corporate Department, Zero Three Six, Public Defender, amount two thousand dollars, reason to transfer savings from the regular full-time employees line to the employee recruitment line in order to offer a one-time relocation payment to a potential new employee. Do I have a motion? Rogers first, Lachson second, sorry. Discussion. Does anybody have any questions for Liz? Mr. Goss?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this, only from the standpoint of, I know it's not a, it's not a huge deal. I just think this is not good precedence to set. It's not going to be a budget impact, I understand that. Just don't want to get this as a portion for us to start seeing these all the time. It's going to pass, I just, I, I can't as Finance Vice Chair, I just can't, I can't support it. So it's nothing, I understand why you're doing it, doesn't mean I like it and I don't agree with it, but that's okay.
Understood. And it may come up again in the future. I'm not going to say that I'm going to not offer this to anyone else ever again. We have to be competitive. And we have public defenders all over the state who, nobody wants to do this work, we can't pay enough. This woman is moving three and a half hours south on a sixty-grand budget, having graduated from law school as a single mother. And I think it's not too much to ask for us to be able to solicit this type of things from other staff. If we're going to get people to come and work in this job, Champagne County's got to offer something that the other counties are not offering. So this is the first time I've done it, but it may not be the last, I just don't know yet.
Ms. Lachson?
I guess kind of to echo what Ms. Pollak just said there, I agree, it's, it's not typical. I, it's not something that we've done a lot, I, if ever in the past, but it's innovative and I appreciate that in order to fill some of these roles that are sitting empty, we're going to have to start thinking out of the box this way to come up with ways to attract talent to the county and also find ways to fund, these innovative ways to attract talent to the county. It's just something to think about as board.
I'll echo that last piece. Any other discussion? Ms. Carter?
I will be supporting this, I'll echo with, with Jan. It, it makes me cringe every time I hear the caseloads, right? So I know the help is needed and I'm glad for you soliciting that extra help to fulfill those, those, those vacant positions, so I thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will say, I mean, this comes out of a budget excess in personnel right now that I hope will not exist in the future, once I get fully staffed. But given that I have two personnel line items open, it's there and it's just sitting and it's not enough to pay somebody to lateral in for a felony, so I have to build from the bottom up and this is a way to do that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Liz. Next up, Treasurer Monthly Reports, I did speak with the Treasurer, all of the monthly reports. Yes, sir.
I, I think somebody asked for a show of hands. For the vote, uh, for the last item, for a vote.
Oh. It passed, so it will be, it will not be on the consent agenda, it will be on the full board agenda. And at that time, because it will require two-thirds vote, there will be a, a roll call. This is just a simple majority, is that, is that?
I think that, yeah.
To the Treasurer's report, the Treasurer Johnson told me that all of the reports, she actually has all of the information, she just has to compile, pile them and then the investment reports through the end of April and the March and April, or, I'm sorry, yeah, and the general reports will be done. And I just want to, that'll be the first time in a long time that those reports are caught up to date. It was a big. It was a big rock to push up a hill for the treasurer. She was catching up on a lot of things. So I just want to, um, express my thankfulness that, because I think, especially as we're going into the budget process, having those reports is an important piece of our analysis. As a, as a board, it's something we've been missing for a while and I appreciate the treasurer, um, catching those up. Is it cool with everybody if I do these next two together? Uh, resolution authorizing the county executive to assign mobile home tax sales certificate of purchase, permanent parcel eleven dash zero-one-four dash zero-zero-three-nine, and resolution authorizing the county executive to assign mobile home tax sales certificate of purchase, permanent parcel thirty dash zero-six-zero dash zero-zero-two-one. Do I have a motion? Ms. Michael, second. Mr. Sexton. All those, uh, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, opposed? Circuit Clerk approving the application for, and if awarded, acceptance of the Adult ReDeploy Illinois Implementation Grant. And I believe I have Mr. Kyle Shehart, Shevert, sorry, I tried. Shevert, uh, if you all have any questions about this. Do I have a motion? Mr. Goss, second. Ms. Taylor. Discussion, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Rogers.
Can't hear me. Thank you for being here. We see, we discussed this in our caucus, that you guys could have requested one million dollars, but you only requested four hundred thousand.
Correct.
Is there a reason why?
Uh, because at this time, we only are functioning with our drug court. Uh, we have not started the development of the mental health court yet. And so, um, in order to submit the application, we started with just what we need for the functioning drug court. Uh, next summer, we do have the ability to request more, um, to supplement our mental health court as well once that becomes, um, more tangible.
Mr. S.
Thank you. I just want to say that this is kind of the, I, I, I have high hopes and expectations. This is something that's been wanted for quite a long time and has many supporters, mothers and fathers for this grant. So I, I, I wish you well on that and success and it, we'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question. The third, in the memo, the third sort of goal of this grant was a twenty-five percent reduction in commitments to IDUC. If, if we don't hit that goal, is there any repercussions to us as a county?
Uh, so there is a, a potential for a, um, there is a potential consequence there where it could be, uh, I believe they stated, um, there was not an exact number that was given, but it could be a possible penalty that would need to be paid out. However, the steps that are taken leading up to that, um, there is technical assistance that is offered by the agency, by ICJIA, that will allow for someone to come out to work with us. Um, if there are consequences outside of our control for things leading up to that, then that will be included in that technical assistance aspect. I did include in the, uh, application where it has our numbers for commitments for the last three years. Uh, and going back through our numbers, we actually have been hitting that quota for twenty-five percent commitment over the last few years.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Um, next up, resolution adopting the Champaign County, uh, financial policies. Do I have a motion? Ms. Taylor, second.
Rogers, second.
Rogers, second, discussion. Um, I would like to thank Ms. Ogden and the Executive's Office who put a lot of work into this. Um, this is something we do pretty regularly, making sure that we're up to date with everything that we need to be up to date on. You could see the changes. I think it, the, the, these changes add more transparency and just, you know, standardized, um, processes. I do want to point out, uh, the Salary Administration will be followed for departments whose personnel budgets are subject to the county, uh, board's personnel appropriation procedures. I think that that's an important one that I wanted to highlight, that we might, as a board, be revisiting later. I, I just want to make sure that, one of the goals I have as Finance Chair is that our process for personnel decisions and hiring, um, grade changes and all of that is crystal clear and, and is run as much as possible through the budget process. Um, so we might, I'm, the goal is to maybe bring an ordinance before the board that just sort of, in addition to these policies, clarifies that process. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Hi, opposed? Resolution establishing the budget process for Champaign County fiscal year 2024. As we embark upon that process. Mr. Goss, first. Uh, Ms. Robb, second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? And now we have a budget expansion, uh, broadband expansion project update. We do feel like there's a lot of folks that are new to the board and this is a big project that we are embarking upon. And so if you could introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about who you are and then launch into your presentation.
Yes, um, my name is Mary Ellen Wallner. I've been working with the County Executive's Office, uh, since February of last year and...
I'm Bailey Edinburgh Conrady. Um, I am the relatively new manager of the Champaign County Farm Bureau, AKA Brad Eukin's replacement or successor. Uh, no one can replace him. So I was with the Champaign County Farm Bureau as the Assistant Manager for five years and was involved with the broadband project in that position and now I'm heading it up on our end as the manager.
And we tried to do a pretty thorough memo to give you, uh, an overview of the process that's taken place. Um, and I want to just say, you know, kudos to the county board because you really have gotten out in front of this project. Um, I was at a conference, a symposium in Springfield, um, over the winter. Uh, the Illinois, uh, several of the counties from out, throughout the state of Illinois were there. We're talking about broadband. Um, they are very much behind where you all are. So I want to just say congratulations to you for, uh, being proactive and getting out in front of the process to put a plan together, knowing that there is a significant amount of funding coming down the pike, uh, for this project. So just to sort of reiterate, I won't go through the memo because hopefully you had a chance to read that and we can obviously take any questions. But the task force, you formed a task force back in the fall of 2021, hired Finley Engineering, which was again another great move, uh, to prepare a very thorough broadband plan, laid out design specifications, uh, came up with a potential cost estimate, talked about challenges that would be faced and a process that would need to be undertaken in order to complete, to take this project from design to implementation. At that point, um, the University of Illinois was brought in to do a statistically valid community survey. Um, again, knowing that this would be a key component of any grant funding that would be sought for the implementation of this, of this project. The university, I think, did a phenomenal job. The, um, results of that are on the website if you haven't had a chance to, to look through that. And I, uh, I'm going to give Bailey here an opportunity to talk about the Farm Bureau's role. But of course, the Farm Bureau was really front and center in this project from the get-go. And I think, I know the, uh, the Illinois Broadband Lab was here a couple of weeks ago, talked to you about the need for the expansion of broadband, particularly into the rural parts of Champaign County where the infrastructure really doesn't exist. Uh, Champaign and Urbana, the municipalities, Savoy and many of the small towns, uh, really the infrastructure has been slowly, uh, getting up to speed, but it's the rural parts of Champaign County where it, it doesn't exist. And, and primarily because it's not financially feasible for internet service providers to wire, to put broadband fiber in, uh, in those places where residents can be miles apart from each other. Um, but the other thing I think that the, the, and, and the Illinois Broadband Lab talked to you about the needs for, um, good internet connection for working from home, for schooling from home. Telemedicine, I think, is here to stay. These things that's, that people were doing, but that the, the COVID pandemic, you know, really brought front and center. And these things I don't think will be going away. But what they didn't talk about, and I think, um, Bailey can speak to this a little more, is the automation of the farming industry. And I have good friends that are in farming and have been really surprised to, to learn to, uh, you know, get, get a better understanding of how much sustainable, um, efficient farming now is so driven by technology. And again, the, the sky's the limit where, where that's concerned. So to bring fiber, to bring, uh, high-speed, affordable internet to the rural parts of Champaign County, I don't think anybody, uh, would argue against that at this point. So kind of going back to the, to the need a little bit, you know, that was, that was clear. You all made a good decision to move forward. You put these steps into place, um, got yourselves prepared and ready to select, uh, internet service providers. Again, over, you know, the process was, um, the oversight for the process, the process was carried out by Finley Engineering, uh, but the task force put out a request for information. Uh, nine internet service providers responded to that RFI. Interviews were conducted with five of those internet service providers and then two were ultimately selected. Those two are Volo, which is a local company, and Nextlink, which I think is based out of Texas, is that right? They will share, they will essentially split the rural portions of Champaign County fifty-fifty. Again, to make this process affordable, to make this, uh, these, this implementation affordable, you allocated nearly a quarter of your ARPA funding to the broadband project. Ten million dollars in the two, over the two tranches of funding. Um, each service provider will be allocated or has, you have approved allocation of four-point-seven million each for Volo and for Nextlink. That will comprise about fifteen percent of what will be needed to, uh, complete implementation. Each service provider is expected to meet, to match that dollar for dollar, so that'd be thirty percent of the cost. The remaining seventy percent, uh, if all goes well, will be covered by grant funding through the state of Illinois. I know that both Volo and Nextlink are currently, uh, preparing, uh, grant applications for the Connect Illinois Round Three funding and will probably be ready to submit those applications as soon as June.
As far as you know?
Right. What else can I tell you? Let me, let me turn it over at this point to the Farm Bureau. The Farm Bureau is, um, has, as I said, has been a, a key partner in this project. Their role in this now is really to do the outreach and answer questions that the public might have to help smooth the easement process, uh, which the, you know, Finley mentioned could be a hurdle, um, as we move forward. So the, the Farm Bureau is really, is really poised to help with that, with that part of the process. So I'll turn it over to you, may you talk about what you've kind of been doing with outreach?
First off, thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you for, to Mary Ellen for that invite. And she checked a few things off my list, so my list just got shorter. And I also want to thank you guys again for giving the ARPA funding for broadband in Champaign County. It is going to make a huge difference. And as she said, Champaign County is well positioned to take advantage of these state grants because you guys were proactive. Um, and a lot of other counties are exceedingly jealous of the fact that we are in the position we are in. Um, I have presented to a broadband breakthrough group and several other statewide groups about Connect Champaign County and they all are just kind of jaws drop, how are you so far ahead? So thank you for being proactive. Thank you for thinking ahead. Thank you for taking this, this gap we have in connectivity very seriously. So as Mary Ellen said, this, this Farm Bureau has been tasked to be the outreach of this giant effort. And we started very early on. We have volunteers trained. Uh, we do have a website and a Facebook page up and running, connectchampaigncounty.com. You can find us on Facebook at Connect Champaign County. Um, I will tell you in the transition between Brad and I, neither of those have been updated in the past couple of months, but it's on my to-do list. We've prevented, presented to a variety of community groups, soil and water, a couple of townships. Um, and, and we're at about ten community groups that we've presented to right now, including, uh, we did present to the Illinois Broadband Lab who hosted their listening sessions at our, at the Champaign County Farm Bureau Auditorium. Um, so that was both the elected officials' listening session and then the community listening session. Uh, and then we've also had a lot of one-on-one conversations with rural residents who are very excited about the potential to get high-speed internet out into the rural parts of the county. Businesspeople, um, and other folks who can help us with letters of support to support these grant applications. As Mary Ellen said, easements are where a lot of the background work is at right now. Um, we luckily have great relationships with both Volo and Nextlink and they provided us with copies of their easements. So we've been able to be very proactive with them on the issues we're seeing. Farm Bureau is committed to protecting our landowners' rights. Um, we definitely want to make sure cut tiles get fixed, but that we can still get internet out into the rural parts of the county. So it's going to be a delicate balancing act, making sure that we can accomplish this. But I truly do believe that we can. Uh, we've had a bit of pause on the spring in terms of going out to community meetings. Most of my volunteers are currently sitting in tractors or were sitting in tractors. And so once we get some firm project details from Volo and Nextlink, where they want to start, we're very much going to target our outreach efforts to the areas where they want to start first. Uh, I don't want to just shotgun approach this to the county where we're talking to somebody who's not going to see fiber in the ground until 2026. We want to make sure we're very targeted, very efficient with our outreach efforts. Um, I also want to say, and I don't know if you guys have heard about this yet or not, Parkland is starting a certified fiber optic tech training program. And so those are going to be some needed and necessary jobs. Um, and they are some high-quality jobs that are going to pay very well. So this isn't just providing broadband to rural areas, we're also seeing some job creation already out of this. So I do think that Champaign County is well positioned to really be the example of how this can work and how we can bring broadband to the rural parts for not just Illinois, but perhaps the nation as a whole.
Questions for us? I'm sure you have questions.
Ms. Carter.
I just wanted to point out, um, the members of the task force, um, not Samantha Burnett, Stacy Burnett. If someone can make sure, they make a note of that to make sure you add her correct name as a part of this task force. Thank you.
Any other questions? I also wanted to point out, just so in case, I, I know we have some new members of the board. So in case you're not familiar with it, when a while ago, the board oversees a certain pot of money. It's a very small pot, it was like a hundred something, twenty thousand dollars. And we decided to put money into somebody with grant experience and that person is Mary Ellen and she's willing to continue staying with us. So we, as a board, are funding that position and that has been, I think, a very good idea because we need somebody to kind of keep all these balls in the air. I mean, I don't think when we first hired you, being broadband becoming your life was the plan, but that's sort of what we've done. And then, but we also recognize that we just institutionally need somebody to oversee the whole thing. And so Finley, who is going to be, is that person. I also just want to give a huge shout out to Bailey was like in all the meetings leading up to this. This is a big lift to take, you know, not only to be the new director of the Farm Bureau. Um, I also, I just want to say this, I think it's kind of rad that our county has... I also, I just want to say this, I think it's kind of rad that our county has a woman in this position. It is, especially for a county of our size, it is quite amazing, and so I think we should be very proud of ourselves, and it's super exciting. This is not the only project we have with the Farm Bureau. We also have the Cover Crop Project, and I believe we're going to have an update about that sometime in the next few months. We even talked about maybe coordinating a site visit, possibly. But the Farm Bureau has been a really important partner in all of these initiatives. Really no other questions? Ms. Lockson?
It was such an excellent hype speech that I'm like, I don't have any questions. I'm like, yeah, go Champaign County, go Farm Bureau, that's awesome.
I mean, I think, probably for Jim and I, the biggest is, this is 10% of our money, and we have a hard end date in 2026. We have to have everything firmly committed by 2024. How confident are you in that timeline, given the sheer scale of this, of this endeavor?
Well, and, and we've been keeping in touch with both Volo and NextLink because they're aware of the deadlines, you know, they're aware of what they need to do to get things moving, and they are confident, so as long as they are confident, we are confident.
Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, the sheer scale also makes it easy to spend the money. It's going to go in a hurry when they start putting fiber in the ground, and we had a bit of a delay waiting on the state of Illinois to open up the Connect Round Three grants and do all that rulemaking. And so now that that's open, there's hope is certainly that things are going to start picking up speed very quickly.
Ms. Carter?
So you mentioned that Parkland has a certified tech program. Can you talk a little bit about that? What are they looking for, their requirements to apply for that program?
Honestly, I'm not the best person for those details. Kayla Waters, head of their community education program, she is the one who has been developing that program, and she would be the one who could speak to that. I also know she's working with RPC on that as well, so she would be the one for details. I Googled it and then to make sure I had the name right, because I wanted to make sure I didn't say that wrong, but she, she would be the one to ask for those details.
So your goal would be to use those students from that program to also help out with other work? Or, I mean, is there a connection?
I mean, we, we aren't in charge of the, the install, that's all the companies. But I think having that pool of very talented and qualified individuals in the county will make it easier for them to have the people necessary to get this project done.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
When do you anticipate the first mile will be laid? And please make sure to take some pictures.
Oh, I want a giant groundbreaking, lots of pictures, lots of press. In a perfect world, some point this fall, in a perfect world, don't hold me to that, please, but that's the perfect world.
Ms. Lockson?
Is there anything that we, as board members, can be communicating to our constituents to help make this process easier for you as you move along?
For us right now, it's just a lot of positivity. You know, it's a lot of, we want to do this, we want to get this done, and it needs to be done. Having people understand the necessity of it, especially your constituents in Champaign-Urbana who have high-speed internet, don't necessarily understand the lack in the rural parts of the county. And so helping to bridge that gap of understanding is important, too. It's been a tragedy at my house the past two days because our internet has been out, and my son can't watch Paw Patrol, because we're on a, I know it, right? We're on a 50-year-old copper line in, in the rural Vermillion, northern Vermillion County. And so helping people to understand that fact, that for us, it's not, it's not easy to telehealth, it's not easy to work from home, it's not easy to do remote schooling, and it's not really easy for anyone, but we just have that added challenge of having internet speed that is virtually nonexistent. And so we need to be able to bridge that gap, to really kind of bring the economic feasibility of the rural areas of this county up to where Champaign-Urbana is. And on a personal note, it is, as we talk about telehealth, it's Mental Health Awareness Month as well. And so as we think about the lack of mental health professionals in rural areas, you know, it's important that we're able to do telehealth, to provide those mental health resources in the rural parts, and we need broadband and high-speed internet for that.
And the other thing I would add to that is, as you're talking to your constituents, one piece of this project is affordability, because, you know, even if you have access to, brought to the internet, you have access, you know, through the infrastructure piece of it, you have to be able to afford it in order to get service. And eligible households will, assuming these grants that the ISPs are going after, assuming those grants are approved, a portion of that is that they will be assisting income-eligible households sign up for the Affordable Connectivity, the ACP program, which should make this service, you know, maybe not the highest speed, but it should make good-speed access to the internet available to everyone theoretically. So that, I think, is an important piece.
Ms. Strab?
Having definitely lived in rural areas where connectivity was a huge issue, I would imagine that the last couple of years have, have probably made a strong case for, for folks with those easement issues. Are you having pretty good luck, pretty good success talking to people about the need for that?
We have had really good success in our conversations with local residents. I am slightly concerned about issues with absentee landowners and getting easements from those absentee landowners. People like Jim Goss and our other foreign land managers are going to be very important in making sure we can get in touch with those absentee landowners, making the pitch to those that it's good for the county, it's good for the community, to get those easements signed. But the folks who live here and live in rural areas, a lot of them are just like, put it in front of me, I'll sign it, I want it, bring it out, I need this now, so.
Ms. Michaels?
If I can just make a comment, when we talk about rural, rural isn't just out with nobody around you. I live in an area that I had to wait 12 months, and there was only one, and they had to special open something to get it on. And I live on a road that the Villa Jones, but I'm on, but I'm in the county. So when you think rural, please don't think that is just a house out there with nothing around. These are little communities that are unincorporated. So if we would think that way, and certainly with how the children have had to learn on snow days that no longer exist and things of that nature, rural just doesn't mean out there with no one around you. It could mean 10 or 12 houses. It could be right there next to a village or a city, but that also is included as rural.
Oh, Diane, we remember your Zoom quality. Sorry. Mr. Goss.
Thanks, Kyle, for dissonant, I was going to. But just another side note, so if you have any idea about where Clearview subdivision is behind St. Thomas Moore? We do not have high-speed internet, that subdivision, which has now grown to 18 houses. The first 12, we're able to get Starlink. The six that we're in the midst of construction right now will have no access to high-speed internet. They might have access to DSL. And so honestly, that's just, it's just a mile west of Mattis on Olympian Drive. It's not rural. You know, you've got Meridian subdivision, that's just another mile. I, I mean, those, those places, they can see the lights of Champaign, and yet they have nothing. So it's, it's a huge deal. I do, I do think we're going to have issues with absentee landowners, and it's not so much that I think we can't tell the story. A lot of times is, we're talking to folks that are in their 80s, that maybe their, their experience was with Illinois Power in 1971, and it's been a more recent experience where their 132-foot easement needed to go to 150, and it wasn't, it wasn't done with the care that we're going to talk about doing. So it is going to take some time. I think it's going to take some, some flexibility, a little bit with providers, but the sooner we get started, the, the faster it's going to get done, because it's, I think if, if it's just an absentee loan, landowner and their farmer lives close, they can help tell that story, but there are, you know, it's going to, it's going to take that connection with a land manager or a farmer to be able to talk to that absentee landowner and say, hey, this is really a big deal, and hey, we're going to take care of, the biggest issue you're going to have is a broken tile, and we're going to take care of that. And that's a different way to handle easements. Trust me, I know all about how utilities run over easements, and it's, and it leaves a bad taste for what is going to be a great project. So I'm super pumped about this. I think it's, it's going to be, well, as you guys have said, Champaign County is so much further ahead, we will be the mop, which is great. I mean, it's, it's one of the very biggest things that makes me smile about serving on this board, is to be able to say, we brought broadband to everybody. So, thank you both. I mean, it's, it takes a lot, and I'm sure, Mary Ellen, you didn't, you didn't think you were going to be an expert at this, but you are very much getting to be there.
What's, what's broadband again now?
You know, I, I agree. I think this is the most visionary thing we've done since I've been on the board. I've also, I've done a lot of grant projects that involve easements, more for Greenway projects, but man, it's, once you break that relationship, it is really hard to get that relationship back. So getting this right, so that we have a reputation that we're getting it right, is incredibly important. Also, just honestly, sometimes tracking the person down and getting them into a place where they could sign something is incredibly difficult. I mean, I think that's one thing, I know we've given you a contract to do this, I do think, you know, we're, we're going to have to continue to keep an eye on that and making sure that we're funding that piece of it properly, because that is, it could be a heavy lift, and it can stall out a project. You know, if you're going along and all of a sudden there's one piece of property you don't have, you've got to decide how you're going to either redirect, or you, you, it can really, I mean, I've seen it stall projects for, and we, we're on a clock, and so I think that that's, it's a challenge. I mean, honestly, probably whatever we start with will be the things that we know we could do the easement work the quickest, and at, by 2026, what we'll have left is the challenging easement work. Mr. Goss?
Yeah, I think that the hardest part for a lot of absentee folks is, these will all have to be notarized. And getting a notary public to some of these people, like, you know, my mother-in-law, who lives in Bloomington, but anytime we have to have something for her little farm notarized, it's a challenge, because she, I mean, she does, she has mobility issues, and she lives in a place where we have to just walk her downstairs, thankfully, but somebody that lives out in, you know, wherever they live, whether it's Chicago or somewhere, there's not a notary close for them. So that's, that's honestly a big part of the challenges. Once they see, are you serious, I got to notarize this? Yeah. I mean, thankfully, there are some places that help, you know, now lots of FedEx offices and Kinko's and those kinds of things have a notary, but it doesn't mean they can always get there. So it is a challenge, no doubt.
Maybe we'll have to, at some point, have a, pay for a mobile notary person to zip around the state, we could maybe give him a little jacket. Mr., Mr. Summers?
I just want to comment that all too often, elected officials in government get denigrated and really not thought of highly by folks in their communities. This is bipartisanship. This is working together to accomplish a goal for all.
Anybody else? Thank you so much for coming, I really appreciate it. We just have a lot of new people on the board who weren't here for our five-hour broadband discussion that we had in 2021. That's the only meeting I think I've ever had where every single person presenter went at least double over the time, and I tried to stop it, and the board was like, no, this is interesting, keep going. I was like, what is happening right now? Thank you all very, very much, and for the work that you're doing for our county. Appreciate it a great deal. Yeah, thank you very much. And we have one last item, recommendation to the county board for approval of the creation of HR generalist position to be assigned grade H effective May 18, 2023. Do I have a motion? Second? Locke. I saw Locke before you, sorry. Taylor Locke. Any discussion? No discussion? I do want to say this, this is, we are officially putting this on the org chart, if, but you'll notice that this doesn't put the, we don't, we have to decide as a board collectively how and when we'd want to fund it. There are three options, in my mind, and we don't have to decide that right now, but I just wanted to throw this out there. We could A, fund it right now through ARPA money that we have. We could B, fund it with a vote from Fund Balance, or we could C, fund it through the budget process. But this is just putting it, this is making the, the position exist, and then we, as a body, have to decide what to do with the fact that it does exist. We did have a discussion within our caucus that we do think this is somewhat low on the salary scale for this kind of job. The range is in the low 40s to the high 60s. That's, that's, that's on the lower side for an HR generalist, but we think, you know, we've never tried this before, so let's try it. And I think I've mentioned this several times, when I first got on this board, back when we were under the administrator model, I'll never forget, I sat down at a coffee shop, he handed me a book, it had the org chart, I was like, where's Human Resources on this org chart? In case you don't know, we are the third biggest employer in this county. We do not have an HR generalist. He, this was, you know, he was like, I agree. When I first came here, I was like, this is crazy. We're moving in the right direction. We just have to get it all the way over to the finish line. No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Other business? Seeing none? Chairs report. I just wanted to let you all know, I try to be here all the time, but sometimes my work takes me away. I will not be here at the full board in this month, and I will not be here for Committee of the Whole in June. I really don't like to miss Committees of the Whole. I encourage you, if you have any complicated resolutions, with lots and lots and lots of words, to please put them on the agenda, because Mr. Goss told me he likes long, law, I, I'm hoping that all of our mobile home tax sales can be put onto that day. Finance, we have A1 on the consent agenda, finance A1, B2, and 3, D1, and E1 and 2, and 4.
All right, next we have Justice and Social Services.
Thank you, Chair Patterson. Really light agenda tonight. We just have the monthly reports for Probation and Court Services, March 2023, and the first quarter combined. We have the public defenders reports for March and April of this year. Item B, we have the Rosecrans Reentry Financial Report for March 2023. I do not have any other business.